Welcome, everyone, to the April 21 City Hall Public Hearing, City Council Public Hearing. First up is a public hearing on an ordinance concerning employment and industrial zones. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a public hearing on one of the Envision Eugene efficiency measures, the Employment and Industrial Zone Changes and Code Amendments. These items add flexibility to our land use code for industrial land citywide and change zoning in West Eugene to accommodate more than 4,200 additional commercial jobs inside the urban growth boundary. These changes are based on substantial community input and come to you with a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission. Planning staff is available for questions after you've heard from members of the public. And council is scheduled for deliberation and possible action on these changes on May 14.
Thank you. So, those wishing, I'm going to officially open this, and then those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes, and I have eight people signed up. First up is Brent McLean, followed by Dave Hauser. Brent?
Good evening, City Council members and Mayor Piercy. First of all, my name is Brent McLean. I live at 3355 North Delta Highway. I own a company, I brought my whole staff, it's standing right in front of you, called Eugene Industrial Real Estate. I live, eat, and breathe industrial real estate in the Eugene area. I want to thank all of you for your service, as I can only imagine how sometimes your week work feels unappreciated. I hope that someday my life slows down enough to give back to the city that I love and call home. I first want to commend the planning staff and Terry Harding specifically for listening and understanding the needs in the West Eugene corridor, Willow Creek, Green Hill Tech Park, and Chad Drive area. The staff has listened to the recommendations of the expanded uses concept and acted swiftly. The proposal is in front of you. Makes good sense to move forward as soon as possible, as all of the current inventory levels are quite low. To simply expand the uses in these industrial opportunity areas around Eugene is a breath of fresh air. The main objective is to try and have those who traffic in these specific areas of town live, work, and shop without driving clear across town to do so. This will create employment opportunities that we cannot yet quantify. I work in the trenches on a daily basis with tenants as well as landlords. They both desire more flexible allowed uses regardless of the zoning, as businesses grow into needs over a period of time. For instance, the West 11th area between Byrdelson and Bailey Hill has over 30,000 vehicles per day. These industrial properties need this flexible use to bring the next generation of business entrepreneurs. Please support the zone change and amendments to increase our employment opportunities with your vote as soon as possible. I certainly hope that this is on your front burner as we emerge from this recession. Thanks for your consideration.
Next up is Dave Hauser, followed by Ron Schmedic.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Hauser, 2168 Elkhorn Drive. I'm here tonight representing the Eugene area Chamber of Commerce, and we want to express our support for the employment and industrial zone changes and code amendments. The successful implementation of Envision Eugene is obviously very important to us and something we've been committed to for, as a partner with the city, for a very long time, dating all the way back to the ECLAS study in 2008 and before. The package before you tonight is an important piece of a puzzle as it relates to commercial and industrial land. And while certainly we look forward to a conversation around the expansion of the urban growth boundary for industrial land, these efficiency strategies are a critical component to identifying and maintaining an adequate supply of industrial land. We think these strategies will go a long way to helping us accommodate a portion of those needs inside the urban growth boundary. The package before you tonight, as you well know, does a variety of things. It creates a new E1 zone that we think will create more business development opportunities in campus industrial areas. It applies an E2 and C2 zone, which allows for commercial industrial flexibility similar to what we've seen in the Whittaker Special District. And we've all seen and appreciated the positive economic outcomes in that zone and in the Whittaker over the recent years. And we think this additional flexibility could have the same effect in other parts of our community. And it updates I-2 and I-3 zones, protecting them for true industrial uses. While flexibility is important in some areas, maintaining the industrial land we have, particularly in larger parcels, is really important in other parts of the community. So, these amendments help implement Envision Eugene and support the economic development goals of our region, and we're very pleased to support them and urge you to do the same. Thank you also to all of the members of the community that helped with the Envision Eugene process and to the quality work that the staff of the city of Eugene have done in engaging our community in these code amendments and zone changes you have before you tonight. Thank you.
Ron Schmedic is next, followed by William Randall.
Good evening. My name is Ron Schmedic. Mary Jo and I live at 420 Mar Loop in Eugene. Mary Jo and I are part owners of a now vacant office building with some warehouse space at 2920 Chad Drive in the Chad Drive Business Park. As property owners, we want to thank you, the City Council, the Planning Commission, and their staff for your continued service to our community. Based on our discussions with prospective tenants for our building, the E1 campus employment zone will encourage the development of family wage jobs and more needed local economic activity. The zoning change for Chad Drive, the Chad Drive location is in the I-5 corridor, which will encourage and facilitate needed new employment opportunities, including specialized medical and mental health clinic services for the residents of Eugene and Springfield, the Oregon Coast, and many of the smaller communities going north and south along the I-5 corridor, especially for veterans who need services that may not be available within the VA clinic, which is now under construction there on Chad Drive. We've talked to potential spinoff incubator firms that are now at Oregon or Oregon State Universities that are considering moving off the campuses and into expanded spaces to continue their scientific research and development and office facilities. You're allowing more, the proposal allows more than one firm to occupy the same building, and this would provide opportunities for these small firms and others to enjoy the quality campus setting, to take root right here in our community, and then be more positive economic development and high-level jobs for our community. Several of the people coming off of these spinoff firms coming out of the universities are PhDs and so forth. So, we'd urge your early approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
William Randall is next, followed by Carol Shermer.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Bill Randall, and my office address is 380 Lincoln Street in Eugene. I currently serve as Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. And on November 5 of last year, we held a public hearing on the proposed employment and industrial zone changes and code amendments. During the course of four deliberation sessions in late 2013 and early this year, we came as a commission to our unanimous seven-to-zero vote to recommend these changes to you. These recommendations are intended to implement strategies under the economic opportunity and compact development pillars of Envision Eugene, and we urge you to approve these changes and amendments. I also wanted to make myself available tonight if you have any clarifying questions about the commission's proposal, and also make the entire commission available as you deliberate as a resource if you need further information. Thank you.
Carol Shermer is next, followed by Kristen Taylor.
Good evening, City Councilors and Mayor. I must say, a seven-to-zero vote by the Planning Commission is a great endorsement, so it's a good place to start. My name is Carol Shermer. My business is at 375 West Fourth in Eugene, in the Whittaker neighborhood. I'm here today to express support for the employment industrial zone changes and code amendments. I believe this is a positive step forward in supporting the growth and development of these areas. My office is in the business of landscape architecture and land use planning. We regularly assist clients with analyzing the possibilities for their properties and supporting the growth and development of their property and growth of their business. Whenever I have a client that comes to me that has an I-1 zone, we cringe. More often than not, we have to tell them what they want to do is challenging within the confines of the code and more than likely not possible. Developing to the letter of the code ultimately does not fit many business models in these zones, and we affectionately call this zone the get-nothing-done-and-build-nothing zone. On the opposite end of the spectrum, I have clients that come to my office that want to build in the Whittaker zone, and as evidenced by recent success there, it's booming. The new package of code amendments for these areas seeks to emulate the good things about the land use code that guides the development of the Whittaker area. I think this is a good model. As is evidenced by the recent success for many businesses in that neighborhood, we can see that this is a positive step forward. This will provide needed flexibility, development efficiencies, and allow for more diversity for businesses as they develop along key transit corridors and in core commercial areas. It is a package of amendments that has seen broad and positive support from both the business community and property owners, as well as the Planning Commission. I encourage you to adopt these code amendments and implement them as early as possible. Thank you.
Kristen Taylor is up next, followed by Tenel Woodward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kristen Taylor, and I'm in Ward 3, 1648 East 23rd Avenue. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Kitty Piercy and City Councilors. I'm here tonight on behalf of Guard Publishing Company, the owner of approximately 60 acres of existing campus industrial property located along Chad Drive. Guard Publishing supports the proposed employment industrial zone changes and code amendments, and Guard Publishing chairs the common challenge, as you've heard from people tonight and historically, with I-1 property owners, the difficulty of developing I-1 due to the exceedingly limited permitted uses and restricted development standards. And I wanted to commend staff, because I've been involved in the employment and industrial code amendment process, and I wanted to personally thank them for their effective public outreach, thoughtful inclusion of interested parties, and overall great work. I only have one request from you, and that is to proactively respond to the lessons learned that I insinuated in terms of I-1 and the inability to develop them, primarily because of the past code restrictions. And I would like to encourage you to better meet the goals of allowing more flexibility in this zone, so I encourage you to adopt staff's preferred criteria for outdoor storage to the Planning Commission's meeting on January 27, 2014, rather than the criteria that is proposed in front of you. So, the criteria in front of you does not allow outdoor storage in I-1 zone adjacent to residential zones, except for vehicular fleet parking. B2 was staff's preference, and that includes a 50-foot setback adjacent to the residential zone, a height limit equal to R1, and a heavy landscape screen of L3. And as you're evaluating that, I just would like you to consider the Employment Industrial Land Use and Permit Requirement Table. E2 uses allowed far outnumber and are much more diverse versus the comparatively limited permitted uses in E1. In addition, there are many more E2 proposed properties abutting residential zones than the E1 proposed properties, so both zones share the potential for associated noise and visual impacts. Yet, outdoor storage is allowed in E2 zones, while it is not allowed in E1 zones abutting residential zones. Once again, in closing, I encourage you to adopt criteria that allows outdoor storage in E1 zones abutting residential zones, which address compatibility, which staff evaluated. Thank you.
Teniel Woodward is next, followed by Clayton Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Teniel Woodward. I live at 1763 Adelman Loop in Ward 6. I am serving this year as the Vice Chair of the Local Government Affairs Council at the Eugene Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to enthusiastically support these employment and industrial code amendment changes for the following reasons. This is a package of code amendments that will implement Envision Eugene. There's broad support among property owners, real estate professionals, businesses, and the Envision Eugene Technical Resource Group. The amendments encourage development that fits into the Envision Eugene framework. The current I-1 code is cumbersome and has been slow to develop. There's currently a hodgepodge of different zoning zones along the West 11th corridor, and these amendments will help correct the hodgepodge zones and increase flexibility in I-1, which will encourage development, create more business, and create job creation opportunities. So, I encourage you all to approve this. Thank you.
Clayton Walker is next, followed by, and I apologize if I don't get this right, because I couldn't quite read it, but it's Chief Raffario Tribal Alliance.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Clayton Walker. My office is at 1225 Lawrence in downtown Eugene. I've been an industrial developer since the mid-'70s, primarily in West Eugene, and have been developing properties throughout Eugene and Springfield since that time as well. I just want to say how much I appreciate the staff and the city for proposing these changes that allow much more diversity in the zones that, mainly that I work in, in the I-1 and I-2. The E1 and E2 changes are very welcome, and I appreciate it. And I think what the result will be is much better development and more employment. So, I just want to add my voice to the others without reviewing all the reasons, and thank you for moving forward on this.
So, now, I know we've seen this before, and I'm sorry I don't have the, can't read it perfectly, Chief, it looks like Raffio Tribal Alliance, chief? I think it's you. Yep. Come up to the mic. Introduce yourself, please.
Chief Swiftford Tribal Alliance, Friday Lee Wetsman. Back to the point, I haven't heard too many positive things about the new zones these people are wanting. They keep saying trickle-down, and the only trickle-down that I've seen as a street person and non-street person, because before my street person came to me as me three years ago, I was non-street, board of directors, head superintendent of county, several years, et cetera, went and saw you when you were up in Congress. Good job. It's lacking now. Our advisors are out of hand. They're giving us this crap. They're blinding us to the truths. Oh, but this is good for the economy if you rezone area or ward such and such. What about the economy of the human fucking inequality of life? Huh? What about those homeless who really could use a home? I know kids should go to fucking school during the day and live in tents and sleeping bags on the sidewalks. Excuse me! Why don't you folks get off your little candy asses and go out there and spend a week in your community and learn who the hell you're supposed to represent? Some of you have already done this, be honest. Excuse me, I'm talking here. It's my floor.
Excuse me, but there is-
Madam, it's my floor.
There is language that's acceptable and not, so please just use good language and proceed.
Well, indeed, I will then. I'll use good language. It's all being light into the fucking realities of the Constitution of the United States of America, First Amendment. You can't change that just because your council rules suggest changing. You can't change the Bill of Rights because you feel that's been printed on crap. Ho!
With that, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there are questions or comments from City Council about the topic. Okay. All right. Thank you all, and we're going to go on to the next item on our agenda, a public hearing on an ordinance vacating a portion of Mill Alley. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight is a public hearing on a requested right-of-way vacation submitted by Broadway and Pearl Associates. The applicant requests the vacation of two improved public rights-of-way, which consist of a portion of Mill Alley that is located between East 8th Avenue and East Broadway, and a portion of East 8th Alley that is located between High Street and Mill Alley. The applicant has indicated that the purpose of the request is to revitalize the entire block by replacing the existing buildings and disjointed surface parking lots with a consolidated commercial development. The applicant indicates that they do not have a signed lease with any particular tenant. Staff has received concurrence to the request from affected agencies and utility providers, and emails in support of the proposal have been sent to the mayor and council. To date, no objections or concerns from the public have been communicated. Eugene Code 9.8727 identifies one approval criteria for the council in making its determination on the subject request, which is as follows. The City Council shall approve with conditions and reservations of easements, the vacation of improved public right-of-way, public ways acquired with public funds, or undeveloped subdivision and partition plats, or portions thereof, including public right-of-way and improved public easements located therein, only if the council finds that approval of the vacation is in the public interest. Findings of compliance with the approval criteria are included in the council packet as part of Attachment C. The draft ordinance includes the provision for reserving a public utility easement over Mill Alley. Following the public hearing, staff will provide a recommendation before the council takes action on this item, which is scheduled for May 12.
Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. Do any councilors need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? I think I do, just because I've had a number of conversations. I've heard from a number of people regarding the property. They've not asked me for any position, and I've not given any. Do I need to say more?
Can you talk about the substance of the conversations? Did you get specific emails or?
I've had people ask me, I've had one conversation about the potential use of that property for a Whole Foods store, and I've had also conversations with people who are curious about what that property was going to be used for. Those are the conversations that I've had.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Counselor Clark?
I would say that I've had similar conversations, and I don't think that, I've not given a particular point of view on this particular subject, on this decision criteria.
Same topics that were addressed with Mayor Piercy?
I'm sorry, I couldn't-
The same topics, the same-
Yes.
-subject for the conversations? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else need to say anything? Okay. If the city has received legally required consents from surrounding property owners and a deposit for the proposed assessment, and if the City Council finds that the vacation is in the public interest, the council shall approve the vacation as proposed or with additional conditions and reservations of easements. Testimony presented must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements are evidence sufficient to afford the City Council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in a circuit court. Speakers will be called in the following order. Those in support of the proposal, beginning with the applicant, then those with neutral position, and then those opposed to it. Please give your name and address when you come to the podium to speak. You will have three minutes to comment. The timer and lights on the podium indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of the three minutes. I will now open the public hearing, and first up comes the applicant.
I can breathe maybe this time. Just trying to save on. So, I'm Kristen Taylor.
You speak up.
Yes, I'm Kristen Taylor, 1648 East 23rd, Ward 3, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant has also signed up to speak. Okay, I am here to speak on, as a representative of the applicant. The applicant is also here to speak, has signed up to speak. Downtown Eugene is the civic center, an economic, cultural, and governmental focus of the region. Downtown is the place where a wide range of people come for work, celebration, commerce, entertainment, and living. This combination of economic and social activity creates the growing vitality of downtown and support for a strong and active urban regional center. The applicant proposes to vacate the subject alleys and replace the two existing disjointed buildings and surface parking lots to widen the scope of potential comprehensive commercial development opportunities on this important block, which plays a role in connecting the new federal courthouse, E-Web, Riverfront area, and Eugene City Center. Pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity and outdoor seating areas either on High Street and/or East Broadway will be important features of any development on the block to take advantage of and enhance connectivity and downtown street-level activity. The applicant was proactive during the application preparation. They made an intentional effort to meet personally with all of the surrounding property owners to describe the proposal and answer any questions that they had. They went beyond the requirement of receiving consent from two-thirds of the surrounding property owners, and actually received signed consent from 100% of the abutting and surrounding private property owners and the University of Oregon for the proposed alley vacations. As part of the vacation process, the applicant intends to create an easement for public utilities over the area of the entire existing 14-foot-wide Mill Alley right-of-way located between East 8th Avenue and East Broadway. All of the utility companies concur that only a 14-foot easement in the location of the existing Mill Alley is required for their services. There are no existing E-Web, Northwatch Natural, Century Lee, Concaast, or City of Eugene public utilities located in the subject section of East 8th. Therefore, the utility companies have indicated that they do not need this easement, or an easement for their services in this east-west direction. The applicant has been a long-term downtown Eugene property owner vested in the vitality and livability of downtown Eugene. The applicant wants to take advantage of a unique opportunity to create a lively, cohesive commercial development on an entire block of the eastern gateway of Eugene's downtown. Thank you for your consideration.
I had you signed up to speak in favor of it. Did you want to do, did you have any further comments that you wanted to make on this in terms of, you've just been the applicant, but do you want to speak in favor of it as well since you were-
Sure.
-signed up for that?
I have, thank you. I'm really long-winded tonight, or I don't read- I'm really long-winded tonight, or I don't read fast enough. So, I'll just conclude it. Kristin Taylor, 1648 East 23rd, Ward 3. Okay. The city council, I encourage you to support the vacation of these alleys so the public and the city will benefit from the applicant's investment to comprehensively and cohesively develop this and enhance, maintain this visible block of our downtown and bridge to the Riverfront area. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Also speaking in support, David Devini, and Sarah, followed by Sarah Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor Percy and city councillors. My name is David Devini. I work at 200 International Way Springfield. I'm here on behalf of Broadway and Pearl Associates today to request that you approve the alley vacation application before you. My partner and I have owned two of those four blocks for, since 1996, almost 20 years now, and we just recently have acquired the other two, so we have put the block together. Our vision was to use all four of these parcels to promote and create an east entrance to downtown. Although yellow-roofed refurbished IHOPs work, they aren't the most attractive site as you enter downtown. We believe this property really acts as a connection to the Ferry Street Bridge area, the University District, the Downtown District, because it sits right at the base of all of those, and that developing this site as one cohesive project will better connect downtown to these other areas, create a more vibrant project than if all four parcels were developed independently. We currently have independent development there. We don't think it's particularly attractive, and we'd like to do something a little more statement-wise in terms of our east entrance to downtown. Thank you for your consideration.
Next up is Sarah Bennett, followed by Dave Hauser.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Bennett. My business is at 980 Willamette Street. I'm speaking to you today as a downtown property and business owner, as well as the current president of Downtown Eugene, Inc. I'm here to support the alley vacation effort. Our understanding is that this alley purchase meets the basic city requirements for circulation, access, and utility easements. Even more than those requirements, we've made important progress downtown over the past couple of years, as you know. Everyone, particularly the city, continues to work hard at it because we know we still have a long way to go. This property is an example of a current surface parking lot that, if developed, has the potential to be another step towards an active, vibrant atmosphere we're trying to achieve. Our united goal is to draw more people downtown on a regular basis. So, a new retail development in this location, particularly with its connection to the Ferry Street Bridge and the university, would be highly successful. On behalf of DEI and a company that is a very high-quality development company, I thank you for your consideration and approval of the alley vacation.
Next up is Dave Hauser.
Mayor and council, Dave Hauser, 2168 Elkhorn Drive in Eugene. I work at the Eugene Chamber of Commerce and more recently work with Downtown Eugene Incorporated, and in that process I've been involved and supportive of downtown revitalization efforts for more than two decades. And it's really nice with the leadership of our city council and city staff and so many others that we've made great strides in downtown revitalization. However, we need to be cautious not to assume that the work is done, and this alley vacation sets the stage for another significant development, whatever that may be, in our downtown. And I think it's important to notice that development lots of this size are increasingly rare in our downtown. So consolidating these four lots into one lot is an important part of the revitalization process. This vacation, well, so many developments in our downtown have required appropriately a significant amount of public support. That support was appropriate and necessary to create the positive momentum that we have seen in our downtown, and it just seems, in contrast, an alley vacation that perhaps yields a development in our downtown is a very modest step for our council to make. It also appears to me that the alley vacation meets the applicable requirements related to circulation and access on the site, so I want to encourage you to please support this alley vacation and help us keep the positive momentum moving in our downtown. Thank you.
I have no one signed up for a neutral position, and I have three people signed up for the opposing view. First up is Mark Rubenowitz, followed by Gavin McComas.
And I don't think that this meets a public interest, might meet an interest of certain developers, but giving a subsidy to a Texas-based union-busting corporation called Whole Foods is not in the public interest in any way, shape, or form. In 2002, the Oregon Supreme Court upheld the right of the city of Hood River to restrict supersized big-box stores, notably Walmart. When Jim Torrey was mayor, councillors Bonnie Bettman and David Kelly brought up how big-box chain stores wreck local economies by taking profits and exporting them elsewhere, and they had hoped that with the change in leadership that happened on his departure that the city of Eugene would join the dozens of other cities that have put through restrictions or bans. NewRules.org, from the Institute for Local Self-Reliance, has lots of case studies on this that won't fit in three minutes. And the city of Arcata actually restricts the number of franchises that you can have, not just by size, but, you know, there's only so many McDonald's or Rat in the Boxes that we need. Whole Foods is a corporation that's notoriously anti-union. They claim that a seven-hour drive on a truck is local food, which is not true. And we have plenty of local businesses that employ local people and reinvest locally. I don't think that's going to make any difference in your decision, but it's good to point out. But any property consideration for Downtown Eugene needs to factor in what the Army Corps of Engineers has been trying to say, which is that we live downstream of dangerous dams. I got to go to one of the dangerous dam meetings last month. This room here would be totally underwater if Hills Creek Dam burst in an accident, an earthquake, any other scenario. We would be totally underwater. There would be 30 feet elevated above the river, including this parcel. So, before you rubber-stamp selling off our public property, you need to get the Army Corps and the feds and everybody else to actually take this seriously. In Japan three years ago, when they had the tsunami, everybody had been drilled what to do if there was a tsunami. Didn't save everybody, but it saved a lot of people. And here, we're not even allowed to know what would happen. Most of your personal properties, you mayor, your house would be underwater, as would everything between 18th Street and Junction City. They modeled the wave all the way down to Portland. In Springfield, everything would be underwater except for Thurston and one little hill. And this affects everybody regardless of your politics, religion, or hair color, or any other thing. This is of primary importance for considering the future viability of downtown, because we all know we live on a large earthquake fault, and we all know that we're in total denial about it, and the fact that there is no leadership anywhere at any level of government on this to warn people that if we had an earthquake, we'd have a couple hours to run the hive ground.
Gavin McComas is next, followed by Kyra Buckley.
Good evening. My name is Gavin McComas. I reside at 2301 Spring Boulevard, and I'm also the owner of Sundance Natural Foods. I welcome the opportunity to share some thoughts about the proposed sale of city property in order to enable the construction of a large development in that space under consideration. In the paper, it was discussed as being a Whole Foods market going into downtown. My first concern is procedural. I hope and trust that there won't be a vote on this tonight, because as you know, the city has very...many people in the city have very strong feelings about this proposal, and I hope that there'll be an opportunity for further hearings where people can voice their concerns so that the ramifications and implications and unintended consequences of the sale of public property can be adequately vetted by the public. As Mark was just sharing, numerous studies have shown that the local businesses keep three to five times more money in the community than new chain stores, and that small businesses are indeed the strongest driver of new jobs in our country. When large chain retailers such as Walmart or Whole Foods move into town, their success depends on taking business away from existing stores, and this results in a net loss of jobs in those towns. Furthermore, the special character of a community and the quality of life are dramatically diminished when our shopping experiences are relegated to large national chain stores, where we are treated anonymously rather than in small local stores, where we are treated like the neighbors that we are. So, I urge the city council to take more time to consider this project, and even more importantly, to provide more opportunities for the citizens of Eugene to express their feelings about it. Thank you.
Kyra Buckley's next.
My name is Kyra Buckley, and I live at 1936 Willamette Street. And in addition to being a Eugene native, I'm also a journalism student at the University of Oregon. I thought about simply reporting on the discussion that's taking place here tonight, but I feel that the issue is too important not to break the fourth wall of journalism. I'm also intrinsically tied to Eugene's natural food community. My parents owned the Keystone Cafe as I was growing up, and next month I celebrate my eighth year working at Sundance Natural Foods, and I just ended a two-year term on the board of directors for the Willamette Valley Sustainable Foods Alliance. I am concerned over the proposed sale of two alleys at High Street and Broadway to a Eugene firm that allegedly wants to develop a Whole Foods market. Whole Foods is a poor fit for Eugene, and I urge the city to prevent the sale of these alleys in order to halt the establishment of the market. Eugene is the premier location for local, natural, organic, and sustainably grown foods, and we have an active and passionate community of people working to make sure these local...this local food economy thrives. Working at Sundance and as a journalist, I've had the pleasure of meeting some of the most amazing individuals who have dedicated their lives, humbly and gratefully, I might add, to either farming, producing, or distributing the most delicious, organic, and sustainable fruits, vegetables, and products. You know when somebody has a story about the meal that they're eating? Their friend baked the bread for them. Their friend grew the produce that they're eating, and the salmon was just caught yesterday by the man that they bought it from at the sprout market. Well, I think that these stories connect us not only to the food we're consuming, but to those who work tirelessly to provide quality food for our community. It is these stories that should be the face of the Eugene local food economy, not a corporate natural food store, because it is these stories that will attract people to our city. I am not anti-business or anti-growth, but I do believe that we must look within our community for growth, specifically in our food industry, before looking to bigger companies. Because it is the unique Eugene community that makes our local food economy so strong, makes Eugene a great place to live and a healthy place to consume. And so, tonight, I not only urge the city to reject the sale of the alleys to be used for developing a Whole Foods, but I also challenge the city to grow our downtown by further supporting the existing sustainable food advocates in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, that concludes the opposition. Does the applicant have a rebuttal of any kind? You want to...not seeing anyone? Okay. So, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. The public record is also closed, and council is scheduled to act on this item on May 12th, 2014. Are there any questions that the councillors wish to ask of staff? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Do we know...we see the schematic for the building. Do we know what is being proposed, the square footage of the building?
Do you want us to answer those now or get back? How would you like us to do that?
Well, actually, I have a whole list here. It might be better if I...well, I...you know, just things like, you know, how many parking spaces? Has a traffic impact analysis been done? What is the scope of the proposed development? We don't...we, you know, has the shed parking lot been purchased? Has the property from the credit union been purchased? I assume the answer is yes, because...but I...yeah, I need...I see someone nodding who's close to the project. Okay.
So, we probably have people that can respond to a lot of these questions if you'd like them tonight, or those that we don't, we can follow up with, whatever your choice is.
Would you like to do that, Councilor Brown?
Well, I'd like to get some of them answered tonight, and well in advance, and I may email in other questions.
So, you want to ask a specific question?
This is Becky Taylor from our planning department.
Yeah, has there been a...I guess I'd like to know, first of all, has the applicant applied for a building permit on the property?
No, they have not, and the schematic plan...
Can you speak up, Becky?
The schematic plan is not a binding development plan. It's an illustration to show a relationship to the alley vacation, to show how the property could be redeveloped with the retention of the public utility easement over the north-south alley, and showing that there's a greater need to fully vacate the shorter leg of the east-west alley. So, the property is zoned commercial with the transit-oriented district overlay zoning, and there's a lot of commercial development standards and transit standards about the building design, size, required parking, and all of those details would be reviewed during the building permit process.
Okay. So, it's just a schematic, and actually, the building could be aligned on the other side of the alley that they're requesting the vacation. And, you know, I look at this, I see that they wouldn't necessarily have to vacate either one of the alleys. I think they could still develop the lot without any vacation at all. I guess I'll just save the rest of my questions for later, but I'd just like to make a couple of comments for councillors to think about between now and then. Thank you. I think we need to be really careful what we wish for here, where, you know, a lot of people have been emailing us, and they're saying, "Keep the downtown momentum going." I agree with that. I don't know if this is the way to do it, approving an alley vacation so that a Whole Foods store can locate there. I just wish people would keep this in mind. Whole Foods, six years ago, said that they could do $42 million a year in business at that location in 2006. We're revisiting it now. Whole Foods does one-third of their sales are in prepared foods from the deli. One-third of $42 million is $13 million. That will come from businesses on Franklin, on South Coburg Road, Fifth Street Public Market, and all of the new restaurants downtown. It's got to come from somewhere. Eugene's not going to grow quickly enough to support that. So, we're trying to develop downtown. This potentially damages all of the new businesses downtown. That's something we need to think about. The other thing we need to think about is, is it in the public interest? And I'll quote from the AIS. Quote, "The sole approval criteria at the Eugene Code appropriate number requires the city council to find that approval of the request of the right-of-way vacation is in the public interest." The sole approval criterion has to be in the public interest. So, my question is, is approving something like this for a really big grocery store, is that in the public interest? Thank you.
Who else? Yes. Councilor Taylor?
Yes, I'm also concerned about public interest and whether we'll really abide by that criterion. But I'm concerned too, when you...Mayor, when you said that the record is closed, does that mean we can not consider any other arguments after this?
It just means we are not entering other arguments into the record correctly. You correct?
Right. Yes, I mean, you're not going to take new testimony or receive new evidence into the record. The record is closed. Your decision will be based on what's been presented here and was provided to you in your council packet.
But I guess to clarify, can people come to a public forum and talk to us about this, or not?
The record, no.
No.
Can...is a motion to keep the record open possible? I mean, I heard you announce it was closed, but...
But...
I move that we keep the record open...
Second.
For two weeks.
Second.
So, we're gonna...let's just...
So, can we...
...date in the context of...
And...
21st.
Let me talk with planning staff real quick, just to see.
Answer me.
Yes, so leave the record open for two weeks.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
So, you could keep the public record open for three weeks. Did you have a...
She said two, yeah.
Was it specific time, Betty, that you wanted your proposal?
I haven't looked at...
She's saying it could be up to two weeks.
She said two weeks.
Did she say her motion said two weeks?
Yes.
That's what I said.
Two weeks from tonight.
All right. And they said that's okay. All right. So, now, we're going to vote on it? All those in favor, please? Yes, certainly.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to speak to the motion. You know, this allows people to speak at a public forum if they want to. Someone may have some differing points of view. I don't see the harm in it. I think it might be good to listen to other people. Perhaps no one will come forward. All right, no harm done. So, I think it's kind of silly to cut off public comments in this room two weeks before we take action. I support the...I support the motion.
Okay. Ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three... It passes. So two more weeks, right? With that, I believe we are done with the business of the evening. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Bye. Thank you.